Okay, now we'll have the Urbana City Council meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Baurisovs?
Here again.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing. Here. Okay, we'll start with a brief presentation by the Urbana Park District.
My name is Michael Walker. I'm currently the President of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. And with me here tonight is Vicki Mays, our Executive Director. And before commencing here, I'd just like to thank you for taking this time out of your busy meeting to allow us to have a forum where we could get more information out to the public of Urbana and some fellow elected officials here. I'd also like to take the time to let it be known to the public what a terrific working relationship particularly the staffs of these two organizations have and a great deal of cooperation that goes between the two, which is particularly helpful for efficiency of government in this community, and certainly appreciate that. Now, as you all may know, we have put a question on the April 7 ballot of a referendum. And what we are asking for is an increase of 15 cents in our property tax rate for $100 of assessed value. Why are we asking for a referendum now? Increasing costs have meant that our current tax rate is simply not keeping up, our current tax levy is not keeping up with the rate of increases in costs that we're seeing. During the past 10 years of tax caps, the Park District's tax rate has dropped 20 cents since 1997, a drop of 22 percent. And the Park District's share of the local tax dollars actually shrunk by more than 11 percent. So what I'm trying to say is, in 1997, for each tax dollar that you've paid in local property taxes, 9.7 cents of that went to the parks. This past summer, it was 8.6 cents. And it's for many arcane reasons, and I think it wouldn't be worth trying to go into all the reasons why the Park District has actually been reduced faster under tax caps than some other agencies. But just as an example, the school district, which is also, I might say, had their tax rate dropped considerably, but their rate itself has actually dropped, just their share, excuse me, of the tax dollars has dropped 2.5 percent. By contrast, the corporate tax in the city of Urbana is actually now taking a larger share of the Urbana taxpayers' tax bill. It has gone up slightly, about 3.5 percent, I believe. So you get to levy to a tax rate because you're a home rule unit. We get to levy a certain amount of money, which is capped over the time. And while that is tied to the Consumer Price Index, it simply doesn't keep up with the kind of basket of goods and services that we as a Park District need to have in order to make things go. Now, did this get in the right place?
We can talk about this. This is the first time Michael's seen this slide. This is a new one. What it shows is that all of the revenue that the Park District brings in, including the revenue from fees and charges, that's to rent shelter houses and for day camp programs and fitness programs, for interest income and other kinds of income, the property tax income that we have and the expenses that we have. And you can see that over time, the amount of revenue we can generate from fees and charges has increased slightly. The amount of property tax that we're receiving is actually not keeping pace with the increase in our fixed costs.
Now, the Park District Board, before putting this question on, we understand the economy is in a rather different situation than it was a year ago when we tried previously to pass a 25 cent referendum. We went back and sharpened our pencils and came to the conclusion that a 15 cent request would be the smallest rate increase that would really allow the district to maintain services for the next five years at approximately the level that we've been experiencing them recently. And I would like to point out that over the 10 years of tax caps, we have actually eliminated services in that time. But we're talking about maintaining services approximately where they are now. Perhaps we did reduce mowing considerably this past summer. We could probably restore some of that if this was passed. A property tax increase of 15 cents for every $100 of assessed value is $50 on $100,000 of value in a home. If you have a market value of $100,000 in a house that would cost you $1 a week, $150,000 house would be at $75 a year of additional taxes. So what would this provide? And with this increase, again, as I've said, this is, we're not talking about going out and doing a bunch of new things. It used to be, the last time we had passed a referendum back in 1993, we actually had a set of new things that we were trying to do. We were building the Phillips Recreation Center to replace the Thornburn that had been condemned. We were expanding the nature center, and we had promised as part of that then to develop Meadowbrook Park, something that had not been fully developed up to that time. And that was, is the way one normally used to sell a referendum. But under tax caps, we're in a situation where our tax rate has been driven down over time. We're not proposing a lot of new things to be doing, and if it were not for tax caps, we would not be going before the public asking for a tax rate increase. This is trying to restore some of the funding that has been lost in the period of tax caps. And this increase at this point would bring us in an additional approximately $850,000 of revenue. That represents about a 21 percent increase. So our tax rate has come down 20 cents. We're not talking about restoring partway up to that. So if we can pass this, we can continue to offer what I would call, you know, a full-service Park District in the sense of having both active recreation programs, general and special interest programs, and the kind of community-wide events that we currently run and offer. It'd also allow us to match funding from grants. It's very, you can't go out and ask for a grant unless you've got something to match from the community. And as time has gone on, we have fewer and fewer dollars to put up against grant money coming in to do new projects in the community. And in particular, I think there's a great interest in trails, to add trails into the parks and hook that in with the city. We're in a situation where we don't have very much money to bring to the table on those kinds of things. We also have, and it was identified in our strategic plan done in 2007, a number of critical maintenance issues throughout the district. And we need some money in order to be able to address some of those, to improve energy efficiency, to handle these preventing maintenance issues, and to replace playground equipment that while it was up to standards 10 and 20 years ago, is now the sort of stuff where you're risking a lawsuit, basically, if you keep certain of those types of things in the district. This 15 cents that we're asking for is not going to provide sufficient funds to reopen Crystal Lake Pool, as best we know at this point. It will provide enough money for us to do a thorough planning process, come up with a design for a new outdoor pool, and assess what it would cost to do it and the support within the community for accomplishing some of these things. But we would still have to identify a funding source to make that happen. And it will also allow us to continue pursuing one aspect of our strategic plan that was identified as a major problem that we have, and that is our current maintenance facility, which is more than 50 years old, was built at a time when we had about half the parkland and facilities that we are trying to maintain now. And it isn't, it is outmoded in terms of its environmental regulations and work and safe, workplace safety issues. We know we have to do something about this. It costs us every workday time for our workers to get themselves out into the field from that building and then get themselves back in. We have expensive equipment sitting out, open to the weather, simply because we don't have any place to get it under roof right now. We can't get our forestry boom truck back underneath the roof right at this moment. So we know we need to do some things in this area, but we also understand we can't just, with some of the other issues that are going on, immediately start up and building a complete, full-blown replacement for that building. So what our commitment here is, is to proceed ahead with the planning, identify how we might do this, and look for ways to phase this in over time so that we can, at the most economical way, provide for the maintenance facilities that we need in order to support having an effective district. And again, why the rate increase is needed, without this, the district is going to have to start eliminating programs that I believe the public finds valuable. This would certainly be a very different district that we would be operating. We would continue to have a district. We would continue to have parks. They would continue to be open. But the maintenance that you would see in them and the kinds of activities available in them would be greatly diminished over time. So the kinds of things that might be going away, we would have fewer both outdoor and indoor programs for children, adult, and families. We would have to consider eliminating some or all of our community events over time. Again, these are not things that would necessarily go away in the first year, but over the next two to three years, we would have to make significant cuts in that area. And park services such as keeping actual restrooms open as opposed to porta-potties, water and light, power, and so on, we would just have to reduce the availability of that sort of thing in the parks. Mowing and having, and it's great to have flower beds, but there's a real expense to go in and planting those every spring and then redoing them for the summer. Keeps the community looking nice and vibrant, but it takes money and operating time. We would very definitely be looking at reducing the operating hours at Brookens Gym and the Lake House, the Nina Purpose Nature Center, and the Phillips Recreation Center where we do active programs. And I would also point out that while we have 50 full-time employees, we have more than 300 seasonal kinds of workers. So we would be talking about reducing employment, both in that full-time staff and the seasonal workers. There would be significant reductions there over time as well. So anyway, I thank you very much for listening to our presentation. There is additional and far more detailed information available on the Urbana Park District website. And if any of you have questions and the time in your meeting to ask them, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody have a question?
Michael and I would also be willing to meet with any of you individually if you would like to have more detailed information another time.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Next, we have approval of the minutes of the previous meetings, February 16, 2009, and a special meeting on February 16, 2009. Okay, motion by Robert Lewis, seconded by Lynn Barnes. Any discussion or additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, time for petitions and communications. Is there anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Absolute silence. Guess not. I might have missed someone on going back to public participation. Jean Thompson, did you want to speak? Excuse me, let's just have Jean Thompson talk first. Come on up. Yeah, and just say your name and your address and your issue for no longer than five minutes. Yes, right.
Thank you.
The little black thing is the microphone. So it just sits there. Sorry to forget it.
My name is Jean, I'm sorry, my name is Jean Thompson, and I am a county resident here to address the city because of your involvement with the potential rezoning of the Casey's General Store property. I live at 203 North Smith Road, which is adjacent to this property. My neighbor, Mr. Hutchcraft, and I represent some other people who feel similarly. They were not available to speak with you tonight, so we're the best that they could do. What I have is just two brief things to share with you. I should begin by saying I have read the staff report from Ms. Bird, hi, Ms. Bird, and have talked with her briefly, which is how I knew this was on your agenda. I will, and I mentioned to Ms. Bird, there are a couple of errors in a table in your staff report. My property is actually a single-family rather than mobile home park usage, and a property to the west of this tract, which is listed, it's zone commercial, it is listed in the table as a motel that is actually the Mercer Apartments and has been for many years. So I did want to correct that, and I'm sure Ms. Bird would too. The suggestion would be then that this area is not in as hard usage as you might expect from that report. What I want to read to you is just two things. One, a very brief statement from a zoning analysis that was prepared for me, and then also a letter that I presented to the County Zoning Board of Appeals. "I do not agree that B4 county zoning slash B3 city zoning is appropriate or the intent of the 2005 Urbana Comprehensive Plan. The Urbana B2 Neighborhood Business Arterial Zone better reflects the current and future development contemplated by the plan. This zone permits gasoline stations as a conditional use. This approach permits an intensive use in close proximity to predominantly residential zoning only after thorough evaluation of the development, empowering modifications as needed to minimize the impact of the intensity of the proposal. Jumping the zoning to B4 county slash B3 city permits an increase in intensity of use without controls. The current Casey's is located in a county-zoned B2 district, which is similar to Urbana's B2. Why, then, is Casey's requesting what amounts to spot zoning of this property?" That's my one brief statement. I have a letter to read, or I could try and answer any questions you had about that. Although I have to tell you, I'm kind of operating by remote control here, something that was prepared for me.
Does anyone have a question?
Okay. Let me go ahead and read my own letter, not lengthy. This is the letter that I read to the Champaign County Boarding Zone of Appeals. I understand you do not have a record of it. And so some of the items here will be properly addressed by the county bodies, but this is my statement on the matter. I'm going to read it as is. I will stop in just a couple of places to interpolate. "I wish to oppose the proposed change of zoning from R5 to B4. I have resided at 203 North Smith Road, a property that should correctly be described as a single-family home since 1976. The parcel which is under consideration for the zoning change is adjacent to my property along its northern edge. In all this time, zoning and usage in this neighborhood have remained constant. I have had no expectation that I would ever be living next to business property. The parcel in question was for many years well-maintained rental or owner-occupied property. It even retained some of its earlier rural character with fruit trees, a grape arbor, and occasional flocks of pheasants. The current parcel owner began using it for the storage of vehicles and other materials, though while the house was occupied, some effort was made at maintenance. It was only when the last tenants vacated approximately two years ago that the neglect became profound. I ask what statutes apply to abandoned, neglected, and unsafe property and what mechanisms are in place to enforce them. A change in zoning seems an extreme solution to a problem property. The owner of the parcel in question should be compelled to remove trash and disabled vehicles and either maintain or demolish the structures on the property. If another use for the parcel is desired, it should conform to R5 zoning, such as a school, lodge, church, etc. The Quaker Meeting House, a short distance away on East Main Street, is an attractive structure that is an example of such appropriate usage." I will stop and say that there are certainly a lot of neighborhood-friendly businesses I could live with, not a truck stop. "I have read about the difficulties experienced by people who own residential property next to the New Myers store. The buffer zone in place has not protected them from disruptive noise and the prospect of being unable to sell their homes. In similar fashion, if this petition is granted and problems arise from a business on the site, the damage would be done and I would have no remedy. Of all the businesses that might adjoining my property, a high-traffic, extended-hours operation such as Casey's General Store, along with the nuisance behavior that accompanies alcohol sales, would be the absolute worst. My concerns include increased noise from vehicles entering and leaving the business, increased lighting, increased foot traffic through and near my property, the possibility of fuel spills or leakage, the loss of mature trees, and general security and privacy issues." I'll stop and add to that crime. "The site plan shows that Casey's building, along with a loading area and grease trap access, would be in very close proximity to my dwelling." I'll stop and say it would be about 30, 35 feet from my house. And it's not just a matter of proximity to the house. Casey's site plan shows their building extending all along one side of my property, all their operations within about 20 feet, so my entire property would be degraded. "Casey's current Urbana location is less than a mile away on East University. I am familiar with the high-volume business they do in gas and convenience items, the frequent deliveries by fuel tankers and other vendors, as well as occasions of congregating and loitering. Casey's hours of operation at their current location are 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. The preliminary report states that noise from commercial air conditioning and refrigeration units would be a concern. Large overhead lights illuminate the gas pumps before and after daylight hours. It simply cannot be said that this increased lighting will not have an impact on me. As Casey's plans a larger operation, a larger footprint on this parcel, I would anticipate even more of the same, more noise, exhaust, glare, and congestion. My sleep would be disrupted, and I could no longer enjoy the use of my backyard and deck as I do now. This is not a neighborhood-friendly business. A change of zoning to B4 would represent a radical shift in usage. There is no compelling reason to change zoning, simply to allow an existing business to move a short distance away, especially since there is such a variety of available commercial properties in our community, which are better suited to the highway nature of this business. I ask if it is consistent with the planning goals for this area, or if it would instead contribute to strip development and urban sprawl. General compliances with zoning goals do not necessarily outweigh the specific issues of intensive-use zoning of B4 adjacent to residential zoning. When Casey's closes or vacates this location in the future, the B4 zoning would allow for any number of different business uses without real control. Granting this petition and allowing this business use would most drastically impact the quality of my daily life, reduce the value of my property, and diminish prospects for its resale. My home is my sole residence, and over the years, I've made many improvements to it. And as for most people, it is my principal asset. Please take no action, which would damage it. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Questions? Yes, Brandon.
I did have one question, Jean, just so I could understand your proximity. Are you the property that's immediately next to the Edge Scott Fire Station?
I am, yes, I am on Smith Road. If you know that area, they have a parking lot, and I live next to the parking lot. And my property extends all the way along the back of that parcel.
Okay, thank you. That's definitely close, yeah.
Yeah.
Did the county talk about the noise issues?
We had a, I don't think noise specifically came up, although it was in the preliminary report, and I've noted that, and I want to make sure it comes up at our next report, at our next meeting.
Okay.
In May.
Yeah, because we do have some problems. We're going to have to redo our approach to things to make sure that noise is not going from one use into an incompatible use like a residential area. We're working on a problem like that right now. So we don't want to see more of it, obviously.
Well, I would say, I do understand the staff report or the rationale that we are along an arterial highway, you know, that argues for B4, but there's a difference between living in some, you know, general proximity to a highway and having the highway come to you. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Brandon.
Yeah, I guess the only other comment, and you probably are well aware of this if you've been at county meetings as well, is that we don't have the final say, as you know. Even if we were to protest, it would just mean the two-thirds requirement upon the county board, so ultimately, yeah, you have to talk to them and engage them a lot more, but...
I do understand that, and I understand your role in it, but we're leaving no stone unturned, should we?
Yeah, definitely.
And it's nice to see you all, having read so much about you.
Okay. Mr. O'Neill, is there, has there been a change in state law that affects our ability to influence these things?
Mayor, I would have to research. I couldn't answer right off the top of my head.
And I wondered if we have to act on it tonight, or if we can put it off?
You can put it off, I imagine. But I need to do research to determine whether or not there's any new...
I did see something come across my desk about that. I'm sure a lot of things come across your desk, too. Okay, well, thank you very much. We will take your concern seriously.
I think someone is representing my neighbor on the same matter.
Okay. You want, did they fill out a little thing, or you want to just come up? Oh, you already filled it out. All right. Well, it's hard to know our rules and procedures here, but we're happy to hear from you. Just state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Orrin Hutchcraft. I'm representing Lloyd Wright, who lives across from Jean. Jean pretty much summed up everything. I think she was very detailed in her research and her complaints, and I just really wanted to echo that on behalf of Mr. Wright. Also in their plans, too, there's also a proposal to connect that sewer line into, actually towards his property there, too, and that's a major concern of Mr. Wright, too, because there's going to be some digging up, and it's really not even that close to his property, but that's where it's proposed to end up at. So outside of that, his complaints are pretty much the same, concerned with, you know, some of the nuisances that come with a convenience store, and the traffic, and the lighting. Of course, there are trucks, you know, fuel trucks, delivery trucks are going to be coming in at all hours of the day, because they'll be making their deliveries usually after their hours of service or before. So there's a concern about noise and those issues. But outside of that, I don't want to take any more time, but I just wanted to issue those, or address those issues by Mr. Wright.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Old Business. Resolution number 2009-02-07R, a resolution adopting certain cable-related needs and interests of the city of Urbana, as identified in the formal needs assessment report and related requirements set forth therein, authorizing the issuance of a request for formal renewal proposal for a cable franchise, and closing the initial stage of formal franchise. I would imagine that would be closing the initial stage of informal? Is that what it should be?
I'm looking.
Mr. O'Neill?
I'm looking. Mayor, I also wanted to tell you, in terms of the title, I didn't create the resolution, Mr. Grogan did.
Okay.
And so that's why I'm hesitant to say that he didn't mean exactly what he put down there.
Okay.
So I'm going to say that it's appropriate for now, okay? And if we need to, we can amend it. As you all recall, I had stated in our previous meeting regarding this matter in closed session that all these materials will be forthcoming, and I've emailed them all to you. They've all been put out on the website, as I indicated they would be, and also were mailed in a disc format. I hope you enjoyed reading. You had a good time reading this stuff. Essentially where we are is this, during the past two years, we've been attempting to reach... to reach an agreement with Insight, which is now Comcast, in terms of renewing our franchise agreement with that company. During the course of the two years, we've had numerous meetings, phone conferences, we've conducted a formal needs assessment, and we've had an opportunity to present our request for the items that we'd like to see in a new agreement. We've tried to do it informally, because we thought that perhaps that would be the most economical, obviously, way to get it done, and also the hope was before the expiration of this agreement, that we would be able to just meet informally and kind of go back and forth and see if we could make any progress that way. It became clear at some point that we had reached an impasse in those negotiations. There is a, I'm trying to think of the right word to put, there is a large chasm between what Comcast is offering and what we're demanding. And essentially, we're demanding what we already have. And they are not wanting to do that particularly in the sense of our PEG fee, which is 2% on top of our franchise fee of 5%. We've had that for the last fifteen years, and Comcast has made it clear that they do not want to continue with that model. That, along with, there's some other collateral issues, which I'm sure you all have read about. So we're so far apart that we feel that to continue with informal negotiations would prove fruitless, and at this time, what we would like to do is enter into formal negotiations. And that is, that entails us making a request for a formal proposal from not just Comcast, but any cable operator. So our RFRP is for any cable operator out there that wants to have a franchise, but we have based our request and what we're looking for on our formal needs assessment, which took a look at technical, customer service, financial issues, it kind of, we had some customer service, customer surveys that were conducted, and we feel that this, in an appropriate and full way, explains what we feel our community needs are at the time, at this time. So that's what this is about, and this resolution is basically going to authorize us to us being, me and Brian Grogan, to enter into formal negotiation with Comcast or any other carrier that wishes to submit a proposal. And what will happen is, after, if you see fit to pass this resolution, we would forward that resolution and along with these materials to any cable operator that requested them, but at least specifically Comcast, and there would be a specific set time for which they would respond. I'll just leave it there. I mean, there's a longer process that could play out, but I want to just stop it there for now.
Brandon.
I was wondering if it would be prudent to send copies of the RFRP to other possibly interested proposers, you know, any company that has a franchise to operate cable service in Illinois or in neighboring counties. It might make sense just so that everybody in the playing field is fairly notified that this is an opportunity they can submit for.
Certainly. Certainly. I mean, there's no problem at all. I'll definitely talk to our consultant about it, and maybe he can give me some, a short list of who would be the appropriate carriers to submit to.
Charlie.
Yeah, that was along the same lines of what I was thinking, and I guess to extend it a step further, how does another company come in? Are they obligated to purchase Comcast's existing? No?
No. You know, another company come in would be like any other utility. They'd be required to submit a proposal, and assuming that we accepted their franchise proposal, they'd have to put in their infrastructure to operate a franchise. It would be a fairly significant undertaking, so the company that did this would need to be an eight-hundred-pound gorilla, you know, need to be a major, major player.
But they could buy out Comcast.
Yeah, I suppose if Comcast wishes to sell, yes, they do. They could. And you all, I haven't lived here long, but you all know that you started out with a cable carrier way back when. I don't remember what the name is, but I think our cable franchise has been with four different, four or five different companies to bring us up to Comcast, and... It's funny to be talking about long ago and cable, and it's only like fifteen years, twenty years, you know? So, yeah, it could, it's been a number of iterations, and the way it got to Comcast is one company bought another company, which bought another company, so I have no information whatsoever as to whether or not Comcast would seriously entertain that or not, but of course, it's a possibility.
Mayor?
Charlie.
If I could, then I'd move approval of Resolution 2009-02-07R, a resolution adopting certain cable... Should I read the whole title?
No, please don't.
Oh, okay.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Lewis. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'd like to wish Ron good luck on this one.
Thank you, I will need it.
I don't think there's anyone opposed, so that motion carries.
Okay, from the Traffic Commission, we have three items. I'll do the first two together, and then the third one. Ordinance number 2009-02-10, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 2393 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, requiring stop signs at certain intersections, this is High Street at Lynn Street. An ordinance 2009-02-11, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23183 of the Traffic Code, prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, this is Scottswood Drive. For the committee, I so move.
Second. That was very clear. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Orrin, right?
I should have one.
Okay. Any discussion?
I can't, yeah.
Yes, Ms. Stevenson.
Where is this portion of Scottswood Drive?
It's about a block up.
It is just south of Main Street, about a block or two. It's sort of halfway between.
Is that city territory?
Yes, there's a small stretch that's in Urbana, and most of it's in the county.
Okay, that's what, that's what they're...
Yes, yeah, it's one house.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, the... Right, yes. Okay, that motion carries. Next, Mr. Smythe.
Next up is ordinance number 2009-02-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to establish a parking meter zone on certain streets, this is Clark, the Clark Street section right off of Lincoln. For the committee, I so move.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Bowersox. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Mr. Smythe.
Next is Resolution number 2009-02-08R, a resolution accepting the 2008 Champaign County Greenways and Trails Design Guidelines. For the committee, I so move.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
The last item is ordinance number 2009-02-13, an ordinance vacating a portion of West Saline Court. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Barnes. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next is report of special committees. I don't believe we have any special committees to report. All right, New Business. Resolution number 2009-03-009R, a resolution rescinding Resolution number 2009-02-003R, and authorizing and approving the execution of a new agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation. This is for Windsor Road from Boulder Drive to High Cross Road. Did you want to, did you want to say anything, Bill Gray?
Last Monday night, I filled in a little bit with the $4.1 million stimulus package that has come to COATs, and Wednesday, we'll have a technical committee meeting followed by a policy committee meeting, and we are very close to coming up with the distribution of that $4.1 million to the five agencies involved, and what we need is the flexibility, and I guess the trust that the mayor will fill in the number that we hear about at that Wednesday meeting, and we would then forward on the information, the local agency agreement, then onto IDAT. Just as information has come about, the immediacy of this has been lessened to some degree now, Mayor, in that we're now, by receiving money from the stimulus, we have to go to the June letting, so we cannot have Windsor Road on the April 24th letting. So what I know now, which I didn't know just five days ago, there's not quite the same urgency as before, so we could almost, thinking about it, we could almost postpone and put the actual numbers in, if the council wishes, at our next council meeting. I didn't know that before, but otherwise, I think it's pretty straightforward. Whatever the number is, we're going to get so many, you know, dollars, we're going to put that in. That's additional federal funding to offset the already 3.5 million we're receiving from surface transportation money, so that's what's before us. So what happens is, the mayor will put it in, we'll get this signed and sent off right away, so...
Is it any advantage to moving it tonight, or, I mean, I think people would rather see what the actual numbers are? Or do you care? They don't care. We're going to get some money.
Right. We're going to get some money, and I just...
All right.
The reason why this was kind of a rush last week is, I thought we were still going to be on the April letting, and the deadline was extended a week, but now we now know officially that this cannot be on the April letting, so...
Okay. Is there a motion, then, for this resolution?
Move approval.
Okay, motion by Bowersox, seconded by Lewis. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Ordinance number 2009-03-014, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for a planned unit development at 1002 South Lincoln Avenue and 805 West Iowa Street, Neighbor House.
Good evening.
Okay.
The Neighbor House fraternity includes property that is southeast of Lincoln Avenue and Iowa Street. It's 1002 South Lincoln, which is currently R7, and is occupied by the existing fraternity house. The other property is 805 West Iowa, which is zoned R3 and is currently vacant. In 2002, the fraternity did request a rezonation, 805 West Iowa, from R3 to R7. At that time, multifamily was allowed in the R7 district, and there was some concern with if the property was rezoned, that, what kind of impact it would have on the lower-intensity residential uses. So what you have before you today is a proposal for a planned unit development that will allow for the redevelopment of the property while being responsive to the concerns that you saw in the zoning request. This will allow also for flexibility in design, so that can be sensitive to the surrounding residential neighborhood. The proposal that you have is Exhibit E in your packet. If you wanted to look at that, that's what you're approving tonight, is the preliminary development plan. It does include basically redevelopment of the site with a new three-story, approximately 16,000-square-foot building that will have a capacity of 48 men. There's also a 24-space parking lot proposed. In addition, you'll see a rain garden to the east of the parking lot, which will serve as a buffer. In addition, there is a six-foot fence that surrounds the property, with the exception of the road frontages. Finally, they are proposing to reduce the driveways. There's currently two. That will be reduced to one. What you have in your packet is a memo from Bill Gray concerning traffic safety. There's a number of points that he points out, but essentially, in summary, it's just that the design and location of the parking lot, and the design of the entrance, that there's not anticipated to have any kind of traffic safety issues involved with that. Section 13-3 of the zoning ordinance spells out specific planned unit development requirements. Just to let you know, the proposed planned unit development, it does meet the definition of a planned unit development as far as size, as well as the criteria. It is consistent with the goals of a planned unit development. It is a permitted use for a planned unit development. In addition, they have, we've identified in our staff report a number of design features. That typically is handled at the final, review of the final plan, but we kind of outlined what they propose to date, so that you could see that it will also comply with some of the recommended design features. One of the, one of the things with the PUD, it allows for flexibility in development standards. They are requesting two waivers in the development standards, one concerning maximum height, 37 feet. Currently, the zoning ordinance says the maximum is 35 feet. In addition, they're asking for a variance or a waiver from the floor area ratio of .66. Again, in our zoning ordinance, it's .5. Other than those two items, the proposal does meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Essentially, to outline the process that you have before you tonight, you have the option of reviewing, either approving, approving with revisions, or disapproving the preliminary development plan that's before you. Once that's complete, they will then come back with a final development plan. Kind of in between that two, those two processes, there will be a review by, we had a recently enacted design review overlay district for the Lincoln-Bucey corridor. Because this property is in that corridor, they will have to go through that design review board prior to final development review. So that will happen probably in April, and then they'll be back to you with a final development plan. The Plan Commission reviewed this, had a public hearing, and based on their discussion, they recommend to council to approve the preliminary development plan with the submitted two waivers. the preliminary development plan with the submitted two waivers. Staff also concurred with that recommendation. Essentially, that's all I have, if you have any questions. And as you can see, we do have representatives, um, from the fraternity here, if you would like to ask them questions.
Um, we have, um, Gary Olson, the architect?
Yes.
And Michael?
Uh, Kennett.
Kennett.
And I'm a vice president.
The vice president.
Of the fraternity.
So, does anyone have a question, or do you have a statement that you want to make?
Um, I'd just maybe like to make a brief statement. We, um, have been working over the past couple of years with Gary Olson, our architect here, and, um, he did a study initially to look at the, to, uh, look at our current facility and assess its, uh, function, you know, the functionality of it. And he basically has, um, his, uh, analysis was to basically look at building a new facility on the current, uh, uh, lots there at 1002 South Lincoln and 805 West Iowa. Um, the zoning at 805 West Iowa doesn't really allow us to expand, um, into that without, uh, either rezoning or looking at this PUD option. So, uh, we've been working with, um, you know, both our, many people in the community, um, as we've been working on this plan, um, our council member Charlie Smythe, the city, uh, community development staff, and leaders from the Westerbana Neighborhood Association, and taking their input as well as we've been working on our projects. So, um, we, um, basically have decided our board that we need to build a new fraternity house to, um, you know, maintain our viability as a fraternity. And we believe that this is the best option, um, available at this time for us. And, um, until we can really do a lot of fundraising, um, we need to have, uh, this preliminary and PUD passed, and then also the final, um, and then also the final phase. But, uh, we're hoping that the city will support us as we go along with this process. And, um, I will pass it on to Gary if he has anything to add.
Now, first of all, I'm pleased to be able to be the first, uh, team that resurrected the planned unit development. Uh, I remember years ago, we had one, and now we've got another one. Uh, we're also the first, uh, team to, I think, be talking to the corridor design committee, and that's our next meeting in April. So, um, bear with us, so far, we're batting a thousand, and we'd like to bat a thousand with you. I'm really, uh, I think you've seen plans. Uh, I want to just point out that this is the, the final plan right here, and we are incorporating many items that, uh, I guess people refer to as green in our site planning and also in our, uh, architecture. Uh, all of this is really, uh, schematic design, but, uh, we've been looking at the same design for a while. We did change the site plan based on our meetings with the neighborhood, and with Charlie Smythe and, uh, his help. He has had a tour of the fraternity, I think he can tell you that we, well, I'll let him tell you what your opinion is. We have about a 45-page review of existing conditions, uh, to see if there's any way we could add an addition on to it. And basically, it would be very difficult. It is, uh, we're very happy that we've, it's been safe so far, but, uh, the new building will not only have two separate and opposite staircases, it will have a, a full elevator for handicapped accessibility. It'll have all the things that the fraternity doesn't have right now, like actual conditioned spaces, where it's not too hot or too cold. Um, and of course, all the features that are coming out in the, in the new 2006 and 2009 codes relative to building safety, including a complete, uh, uh, fire suppression system, fire alarm system. And most of the materials will qualify if we were to go towards a, uh, a level. We're probably not going to do that, we're just going to qualify for it without going through all the paperwork as far as a green building. Based on that, that, one of the, I guess, things that we've been doing as an architectural firm, uh, many of our buildings are now heated and cooled through geothermal. We would hope to, uh, to have about 17 wells, uh, on this site, um, that will give us that. We also are considering perhaps some, uh, solar panels on the south facade, which is not close, you can't see it from the street, it's kind of our, our back area, and other features that are kind of already listed on the site plan. So, I don't want to take any more time, if there's any questions about anything that we've talked about.
Heather?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to move approval. It's good, because it looks great.
Yeah. We're really impressed that you have rain gardens. We're really impressed that you have a rain garden, but do you have full cutoff lighting?
It'll be, it'll be down towards, yes, Charlie.
It has to be, it's in Charlie's order.
Make me lose it here, that's a good one. Uh, I was going to suggest the solar, but you beat me to that too, you know, so, no.
We've got parking for 16 bicycles.
Oh, thank you.
I just want you to know that.
Is it, is it covered? Is it covered?
It's covered.
You know his, they know your buttons.
Yeah, yeah, they know all the buttons. We've been through this. I, I, I've got to compliment the fraternity on two years of working with the community very carefully to get their input. The first design was roundly rejected by, by the, by the neighborhood. Uh, they went back to the drawing board, and, and they put together something that was very acceptable. You can see that by the fact that there is nobody here from the Westerbana Neighborhood to protest this. Uh, okay, so they so, they, they were inclusive, they sold the project. Uh, they really do need to replace their building. If anybody, uh, questions that, just take, just go take a, a tour, you know. Uh, this is going to be a modern facility with a lot of, with a lot of, uh, what I hope are progressive and green technologies incorporated in it. Uh, they will have to start extending their membership to the other end, to the north end of campus, uh, to help them take care of all those electronic gizmos and stuff. But, uh, so, so you might want to consider expanding your, your membership.
These guys are part of the Geek Squad, you know.
Yes, there you go, you get it.
We do have several engineers and things like that, too, that are-
Yes, yes, so, the egg, the egg engineers will be very happy in this building. So, uh, I, 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 I want to compliment them on, on what they, what they've done here, and I think it's going to be very acceptable to the neighborhood. It's the kind of thing that we want facing Lincoln Avenue with a friendly back end that is welcoming to the, to the neighborhood. It's exactly the kind of interface and, and buffer that is, that, that, that we would like in this kind of a situation. And it's great to be able to use the PUD in this very progressive fashion, so thank you.
I'm going to disagree with you one time, just one time. The, uh, this facade faces Iowa. We consider that the public facade, the front facade. But for many, many years, several decades, uh, the front of the building has faced it, faced Lincoln Avenue. And we consider that a primary facade as well. It's probably where the guys are going to leave, because it's closer towards the campus. They'll probably go out that way. But when Mom and Dad come, they're going to come in the front door, which is on the north side of the building. And, which is now pretty much a blank wall. I mean, as far as doors, uh, and shrubbery, I mean, there, there's windows there, but you can't enter from the north at all. And so, it's much more like all the other buildings of this size that you see along that area. And that's why we wanted to make Iowa kind of a main, uh, official, that's where the mailman will, will come. And the guys can still get out the, the side door and get to campus. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion by Heather Stevenson, seconded by Charlie Smythe. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
He didn't want this after all.
That's all right. Too much information.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, good luck with the, the design with these stuff.
Thank you. Good luck with the fundraising, you mean.
Okay, next, we have ordinance number 2009-03-015, an ordinance approving a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana, Illinois. Revisions to Section V8, additional use regulations in the MOR district of the Urbana zoning ordinance. Rebecca Burd is here to explain it to us.
Good evening. This case is a proposed text amendment to the regulations in the zoning ordinance regarding the mixed-office residential zoning district. The Plan Commission held a public hearing at their February 19th meeting and voted seven to zero to forward this case to the city council with a recommendation for approval. The purpose of the MOR district is to allow a variety of residential, office, and commercial uses in the district, and to encourage the adaptive reuse of the existing structures. The proposed text amendment came about as the result of the administrative review of a project last spring. In 2003, the existing MOR regulations were amended to further promote the adaptive reuse of existing buildings by allowing administrative review and the granting of administrative variances. The case last spring was the first time administrative variances were granted under these new regulations. The proposed amendment would generally change the regulations in two ways. The first is that it would add clearer, more quantifiable criteria to determine the level of review for projects. Proposals that increase the building footprint by more than 15%, increase the FAR, the floor area ratio, by more than 15%, include installing or enlarging a parking lot, or substantially changing a building's appearance and/or scale, would be reviewed by the full MOR Development Review Board. Other projects would be reviewed administratively. In either case, excuse me, projects will be evaluated using the MOR Design Guidelines. The second proposed change is to remove the opportunity for granting variances when a project is administratively reviewed. The reason for this change is that when a project is administratively reviewed, the reason, oh, I'm sorry, there is no good process to provide public notification and invite public input. Although administrative variances would no longer be allowed, the MOR Development Review Board would continue to be able to grant variances. There's more information, um, regarding the proposed amendment and the history of the MOR district in your memo, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. You also received this evening, um, a communication from Betsy Cronin, who lives very close to the MOR district. And that should have been on your table in front of you.
Okay, and, uh, any questions for Rebecca? Brandon?
I'll, I'll move approval.
Is there a second? Motion by Bowersox, seconded by Lewis. Any further discussion? Charlie?
Yeah, Rebecca, I was getting confused by a couple of things. In one, um, and this has to do with whether there's any administrative review at this point. Does, does this remove everything, everything, or there's still some? The way I understood Section B here is that there's still some things that do qualify for administrative review.
That's right. Um, so if you look on page four, there's the new, the proposed language. Projects which do not, um, increase the building footprint by more than 15% or any of those other criteria.
So, yes, I am reading it correctly. There is some administrative review issues that occur, but-
Right.
Those which-
Those that would be bigger are, are trying to be caught by these, yes.
Are being caught by these, okay, got it, thank you.
Brandon?
Yeah, and just so I'm clear as well, even if the project didn't get triggered by any of these number one through four, if somehow in reviewing the project, you found that a variance would be required, then you would say, oh, well, since we can't administratively do variances, we'll go to review as well.
That's correct.
Okay.
Or I suppose they could apply for a variance separately from the zoning board.
What if, um, somebody did it in a series of small steps to avoid the 15% cutoff? How is that dealt with?
That's, um, why we, if you look at the fourth criteria, substantially change the building's appearance and/or scale. So, that's the criteria that exists in the, um, the regulations currently. And we left that in even though, um, often it's, it's, um, charged to be somewhat vague, but that also allows us to catch any projects where people are increasing the building footprint by 14 and a half percent, or increasing the floor area ratio by just under the 15%. The fourth one would still allow us to catch anything that would be a substantial change.
Well, what if somebody made a change and then six months later made another change? So that the two combined were like 25%?
Right, we hadn't actually thought of that? I'm not sure. But if at the first, if at the first stage, it was not a substantial change and less than the 15%, and then the second time, if they came back and wanted to make another change that was also under the 15%, but it was a substantial change, then it would fall under number four. And if it wasn't a substantial change, for example, if someone's doing something that, um, if they're, for example, converting an attic, that would, could increase the floor area, area ratio by more than 15%, but you wouldn't see it from the outside at all. So, it's trying to find a balance between allowing a homeowner to maintain and upgrade a property, and yet catch anything that would impact the neighborhood, that would, that would impact the, the block.
Robert? Mm-hmm, right. Right. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, um, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next is, um, the Resolution Number 2009-03-010R. This is a resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champagne County zoning map. Um, this is the 1.04 acre tract of no, of land known as 2218 East University Avenue. And it's for Casey's Real Retail Company. Mr. Smythe?
I'd like to move this to committee next week.
Is there, is there any problem with delaying it?
No, it's not going back to the county, um, the county zoning board until May.
May, may, right.
May 14th.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, there's plenty of time.
Second. Okay, motion by Smythe and seconded by Barnes. All those in favor, oh, you have a question, Brad?
Yeah. I guess in, in delaying it, um, well, certainly if there's any corrections that you all want to make based on things you heard, that would be great to do. The other thing that I guess might be helpful to me in considering this case when it comes back to us is a bit of staff analysis about the question of what business level zoning, whether it's B4, or 3, or 2, or 1, what grade of business zoning is appropriate, given the adjacent uses? I mean, there is single-family immediately adjacent to this property. And if I just took a fresh look at it, I'd think, well, maybe B4 is really too intense. But, of course, we're not taking a fresh look at it, we have to look at what's in the comp plan, and what the current zoning is, and all of those things. So, I, I guess I wonder if, if staff can take that look and, given the surrounding uses, um, make some recommendation to us. Or maybe the recommendation will stand as is, but, uh, but maybe with the new information, it would be something different.
Right, we can, I can certainly make those corrections in the memo. Part of that is based on the county, the county's memo had that information in it. Um, and they're actually not sure about the zoning of Ms. Thompson's property. They can't quite tell on their maps if it's split zoning or it's between single-family and the R5, which is the manufactured home zoning. But we can take a look at, um, do an analysis of what, what we think is appropriate for city zoning in that area if it were to be annexed.
Okay, thank you.
Robert Lewis?
And also, the mayor requested that we look at it from the city's point of view legally. Is there anything we can do as a city, right, to?
Yeah, I, I think we need to find out if the state law has been changed recently. Okay, there's a motion to move this to the next committee meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2009-03-016, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement for certain activities relative to water service in the community. Anybody want to talk about- Anybody want to talk about that from CD?
That would be me, mayor.
Or was that legal?
Yes.
I guess the wrong thing was put on there, I thought it was legal.
Yes.
Legal, Mr. Ron O'Neil.
As you all know, in the past, I or one of my predecessors has come before you to request that you approve a resolution such as this, where we cooperate in an intergovernmental agreement with Champaign and Savoy, sometimes other communities, to go before and intervene before the Illinois Commerce Commission to object to, for example, rate increases by Illinois American Water, as well as some of the other utilities, and that's just what this is, there's been a case that has been brought by the, excuse me, by the ICC, and we are going, requesting that we participate in intervening in that case. Mayor?
Charlie?
Yeah, Ron, I know that the water company asked for a big increase last time, I thought it was like, I think maybe about 56% or something.
60.
60, and they got, what, 44?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven?
Yes.
Forty-seven, so they got a big chunk, and now they're going back for the rest of it. Can, can we keep them from getting anything? You know, I mean, let's be realistic, we're going to go spend money on this, we, we stopped some of it last time, but not a whole, you know, 47% is a huge chunk of money. As far as I'm concerned, they've gotten enough, they should get nothing on this one.
This is a difficult question for me to answer because it, it contemplates me predicting what the ICC is going to do, and it's something, in all honesty, I can't do for you. I've had a number of conversations with some of the other attorneys from Champaign and other staff members from, from Champaign, we have sort of a water group, and it's us and Savoy and Champaign, and the university sometimes participates in those discussions, and, you know, I raised this question when speaking to our attorney, Richard Balo, about that very issue. Can't say.
Well...
I can't, I can't give you the assurance that you're looking for.
I guess, yeah, I guess my real question here is, what are we, what are we going in asking for, you know, what are we, what, you know, what's going to be the, the position of these three governments with respect to the water company?
In this particular instance, the ICC itself, of its own, on its own motion, brought an action before itself to challenge some of the information that Illinois American Water had presented to them previously, and so this is a hearing on that behalf, or we're going to go in and say, yeah, us too. And there've been a number of other larger industrial customers that have, are intervening, usually Cub intervenes as well in these matters. Everybody kind of want to, wants to get their voice heard, and, you know, it's tough because you don't want to lie down on these cases either, you don't want to say, well, we're not going to get anywhere with ICC, let's not do anything, and yet, there's a very real issue of expending, you know, funds to participate in these, and intervene in these cases, but if you're asking my opinion, I, I think it's something that we have to do, for now, for now.
I would say that the money that we spend trying to reduce these increases saves the customers much more than what they're paying in the taxes to go to the ICC. It's a huge amount of money, we're not just talking about what the city government pays, we're, we're talking about what all the customers pay, and I think we're the only people that are going to represent the public, and I think it's our obligation to not fall down on this and, and show up at the ICC.
I, I...
And I think we have other bigger issues that we're going to have to, to study the long-term, what our long-term options are, but in the meantime, I, I think we need to appear at, at the ICC.
Yeah, I guess my, my concern was, what was our position, it wasn't clear from reading this, what our position was and what we're going in after, so now I understand.
Okay, Brendan?
And the funds for this are coming from ED Reserve Fund, or some currently budgeted line item?
That's something I, I couldn't speak to, that's a Ron Eldridge question.
We have money budgeted for outside legal service, so...
I don't, okay, I don't think...
I don't know if that, we could find that out for you.
I don't think that's what normally gets used for these, but Ron typically has some line item that this can come from, so...
Is there a motion on this? Lynn Barnes?
I'd like to move, we move forward with this, with approval.
Is that Charlie, or David? David, okay, David, okay. Motion by Barnes, seconded by Garrick, any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson? Okay, that motion carries. Next is resolution number 2009-03-011R, a resolution approving, authorizing the law firm of Neal and Leroy LLC to represent pro bono the City of Urbana as amicus curi?
Curiari.
Curiari, in the case entitled Albert C. Hanna and Carol C. Raouqua versus City of Chicago. This is the zoning, or rather, the historic preservation ordinance that's being challenged, and the Urbana Preservation Ordinance is very similar to the Chicago ordinance. I got an email asking us if we would join in as a friend of the court on this, and since it's a pro bono thing, there isn't any, if, if the case goes one way or the other, does that affect us more if we're pro bono on this?
No.
Or, I mean, friend of the court, rather?
No.
Okay, so I don't think there's any downside for the city to do this.
No, really, there isn't.
So that's why I brought it to you.
There isn't really any downside, it's, you know, obviously, amicus curiari just means that we're going to be a friend of the court, and if the court allows us, then Neal and Leroy would file a brief in support of the city's ordinance, and this is quite frequent in appellate cases, and they have just sought to seek our involvement, as well as other communities who wanted to participate. There's no cost to us, it doesn't hurt us one way or another, whether they prevail or, or don't, whether the principal parties, I should say, prevail or don't, it's just something that you provide to the court to say, look, we would like to assist you in your analysis of this issue by providing you with a legal brief on the matter.
Motion by Lewis, seconded by Bowersox, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carry, did you say?
Aye.
Okay, there's, okay, one no. The motion carries. Now, we have an item for a closed session on property acquisition issues. Is there a motion?
I move that we go into closed session for property acquisition issues pursuant to five Illinois consolidated statutes, 120 slash 2C5.
There's a second by Stevenson. Would the clerk, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Boiling over with enthusiasm.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yeah.
Mayor pressing?
Yes.